Thank you very much. Let's do roll call first. Mr. Limbach?
President.
Mr. Montgomery?
I'm present.
Mr. Watkins?
Present.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Fickett?
Present.
Mr. Martsky?
Present.
Mr. Saunders?
Present.
You're a full house.
Congratulations, Chairman.
Yes, you. Can we read our slides now? Welcome to this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Here are a few ground rules. Please turn off cell phones or silence your ringers. Also, please be polite to other stakeholders. No applause, no booing, no cheering. If you are attending in person and wish to speak, fill out a speaker information form and give it to the planning staff. Forms are available on the table next to the door. The commission chair will call you at the appropriate time. If you are attending online and wish to speak, raise your hand in the team's chat and provide your name, address, and agenda item number you would like to address. The commission chair will call you at the appropriate time. Your microphone will otherwise remain muted. In-person speakers must come to the podium when called by the commission chair using the microphone to capture your comments. Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three commissioners are from cities. At least six commissioners are from unincorporated areas. A commissioner's service is pro bono. A quorum is five commissioners. Special use docket decisions are approved by the commission. A majority vote passes a motion. A tie vote triggers a rehearing at the next meeting. Appeals of special use decisions are heard by the Board of Supervisors. Appeal procedures can be found on the county's website. For additional assistance, contact Development Services. For other docket decisions than special use requests, result in a recommendation forwarded by the commission to the Board of Supervisors. A majority vote passes a motion. A tie vote fails. To voice an opinion regarding a recommendation, you may attend the Board of Supervisors' public We observe the following time limits. Each speaker is limited to five minutes for call to public, 10 minutes for the applicant's statement, three minutes for supporters or those opposed, and five minutes for applicant rebuttal. I would like to ask for a motion to approve last month's minutes.
Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Saunders. Thank you, Mr. Limbach. Mr. Limbach, do you vote to approve?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Abstain.
Thank you. We missed you. Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Abstain.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Martsky?
Aye.
And Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
The minutes are approved from last month. Thank you. This is the time for call to public. Pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.01H, this is an opportunity for the public to comment. Individuals are invited to address the commission on any issue within the commission's jurisdiction. Since commissioners may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on this agenda, commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. I do not have any speaker forms to staff. Thank you very much. Let's move on to our docket items. The first one is RZ 25-01. Applicant is Prince in Sunsites Unit 2. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is the staff presentation for docket RZ 24-01. An applicant initiated request to rezone property from SR 43 to RU 4. The applicant is Paul Prince. The property is located in Sunsites Unit 2, generally bound by Windsor and Yale Streets, as well as Palm Street, and encompasses multiple parcels, 11706, 63, 64, 66, 67, 74, 75, 76, 77, and 78, totaling about 10 acres. Again, the current zoning is SR 43. The applicant is requesting RU 4. Growth area designation is rural. Plan designation is medium density. Existing use of the property is set. There are accessory structures on the property. The proposed use is the applicant wishes to build a site-built dwelling utilizing the county's owner-builder program. Property is located in Sunsites Unit 2, approximately five miles west of Highway 191. Again, showing the parcel zoned SR 43 as our surrounding parcels. There are parcels to the west along Cochise Stronghold that are zoned SR 174. Those were rezoned back in 2015 and 2024. This is a broader view. It's kind of difficult to see the subject property highlighted in the lower left-hand corner. The boundary for Sunsites Unit 2 is the red dashed line. So all the Sunsites units have retained generally their single household residential zoning districts. We've seen multiple rezon applications. There are approximately 2,000 tax parcels within Sunsites generally. Sunsites Unit 2 is bound by Ironwood and Pierce Roads to the north and south, and Wilcox and Cochise Stronghold to the east and west. Between 2015 and 2024, there were three rezones to SR 174 involving multiple parcels. And between 2002 and 2024, there were six rezones to RU 4, also involving multiple parcels by multiple owners. There's some images of the roads that bound the subject properties. Yale in the top left, Palm in the top right, and Windsor in the center. This is a drone image viewing to the southeast of the subject property. This is an image viewing east. An image viewing west towards the mountains. And one last image also viewing west, showing some of the existing structures on the property. I should note that the county does have an active code compliance case on the property for unpermitted structures and an occupied recreational vehicle. The applicant has submitted a site plan demonstrating an intent to develop four parcels with a site-built dwelling and several outbuildings. There are existing corrals on the property now. The applicant is also suggesting that the remaining six acres would be left as open Section 2.63 of the zoning regulations identifies 15 factors used to evaluate rezoning applications. In this case, nine factors apply to this downzone. In terms of factors in favor of approval, the request complies with applicable factors. The request to build a single-family residence is consistent with the residential growth pattern of the area. A downzone would also reduce the number of allowed principal dwellings. Factors not in favor. Staff has received multiple responses in opposition from nearby property owners. Staff mailed notices, 34 notices to 22 unique property owners within 300 feet, and executed the public notification process between 14 and 19 February. Staff has received multiple, again, multiple responses in opposition. Three from property owners within the notification area and three property owners outside the notification area. Some of the property owners within and outside the notification area owning multiple parcels. Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket RZ 25-01. We are available for the commission's questions, and the applicant is present.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. This is the time for you to speak. Thank you, sir. Yes, into the microphone. You have 10 minutes.
I just wish to say that...
Sir, could you speak in the microphone, please?
Sorry.
Thank you.
I'm wanting to have the RU 4 because the 174 doesn't allow for me to have a bigger building than my dwelling. The primary residence in this situation would probably be in the 600 square foot range or so. I would like to develop a shop, hay shed, and horse shelter all in one building rather than have multiple buildings scattered out on the property. And that's why I'm going for, asking for the RU 4 because the 174 does not allow for that. I'm not interested in owning a mobile home. I'm interested in building a Spanish Mexican-style dwelling which blends in with the area that we are in. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you. This is the time for public comment. I have several request forms. Mr. Hudson?
Hudson. I live nearby, and we meet again one month later. My wife and I, when we first saw this area just adjacent to Cochise Stronghold next to the National Forest property, we thought it was something special. We decided to build there. But before we built there, we checked everything. We checked the zoning. We checked the routing for major traffic. We checked ranching, all the things that might have an impact on what we had planned and what we wanted to do in building a small but nice, efficient retirement home. We put things that needed stored in two storage units in town. Those storage units are still available, and they're reasonably available cost-wise. And when we were able, we moved them over to the property. What we did not do is we did not buy land and then try to change things to make it the way we wanted it to be or needed it to be, especially in opposition to what would be our future neighbors. I have come to love this area. I think we live in a very special place, and I am very aware of the things that are going on, whether it applies to ranching or farming or water issues and so forth. But nothing is more important than the home that people live in. And like many others nearby, I put everything that I had earned in my life into my home. It's not big. It's not fancy, but it's nice, and I keep it nice. Got to know our neighbors. We have great neighbors that take care of each other the way that you would want neighbors to do. There is a reason why real estate appraisers place a lot of emphasis on comps or comparable properties nearby when they're appraising a property, and that is because it matters what's near you and the effect that it has on your property, on the value of your property. And few things affect it more than mobile homes. And all you have to do is go to Richland Estates. My wife and I have two really good friends. They have dinner with us at least once a month. They have a double-wide in Richland. They keep their property up good. But on one side of them is a 60-year-old mobile home. On the other side of them is a home that somebody abandoned, and it is window shot out, everything just erect. This area, right adjacent to the National Forest property, this Unit 2 area, is the area that if somebody's going to come in and build a nice home, they're going to want this area. Look on the opposite side. Directly across from us is the Zurgroon Ranch, the gated community. And is that five minutes already?
Three, sir. Thank you, sir. We heard you. Linda Blake?
Hi. My husband and I purchased our home in 2011. We downzoned from SR 43 to SR 174, basically for the owner-builder aspect of it. I'm with that gentleman as far as the, I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to visit Richland. The blanket RU 4, you can see a beautiful home, and then right next to it is just something that you see in a horror movie. And I don't want that to happen to our area. And other than what I included in my letter of opposition from my husband and myself, which pretty much speaks for everything I believe in, that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Shields? Please state your name and address.
Michelle Shields, P.O. Box 712, Pierce, Arizona. Okay. Or do you want my physical address? Or is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay. Sunsites Unit 2, in this particular area, because I know Sunsites Unit 2 is rather large, has sweeping views of the valley, and we are close to the National Forest. That and the consistency of the site-built homes is what draws people to that area and its beauty. On the application, the applicant said that he was trying to do RU 4 to take advantage of the owner-builder opt-out. But yet, the SR 174 also will allow for the ownerbuilder opt-out. I know because I did that back in 2016, and I was able to build a home with SR 174. Like Linda said, she did it, and there's somebody down the road that also changed to SR 174. And even though the applicant might not at this moment want to put a mobile home in, having the zoning changed to RU 4 will put that option out there for anybody in the future. And that is a slippery slope that would bring light to the area and also decrease our property values. And then just one thing I wanted to note here is that 500 and some odd feet that the applicant said west of his properties was zoned to RU 4. I just want to clarify that that is not RU 4, and Matthew kind of alluded to it, but that is the Coronado National Forest. And in this particular area, there is no private land. There are no homes, so there's no RU 4 there. There's something else I'm forgetting, but I can't remember, so I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Online, Kevin Todd?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. State your name and address. You have three minutes.
Hi, yes, this is Kevin. Last name is Todd. I live at 531 South Skyline Drive, very close to the applicant's property. Just wanted to say thank you for letting me speak today. You probably remember me from, also from two months ago, when we had gone through this previously with another zoning request a couple of blocks away. So I was kind of surprised by the timing of this all, but if nothing else, you know, it gives me an opportunity to speak again on some points that I feel are really important here. And first of all, I just want to say, my comments here have nothing personal to do with Paul. I've met him, and I like him. He sounds like a stand-up guy and a respectful neighbor. But again, what this is about is what Mickey is speaking to is the proverbial slippery slope. And opening up the zoning to RU 4 then gives an example where other cases are going to come in. And at some point, somebody is going to put a mobile home here. Somebody is going to put a manufactured property that is not in line with the integrity of the neighborhood. So I feel like this has been said. It's going to be said again if more cases come up here. But the two things that I really want to hammer on is, number one, this 300-foot notice, I'd really like the county to work with the residents out here because it's not working. It's not acceptable. It's not fair. It's not reasonable to us. We need a much bigger notification radius, like a half-mile for these zoning applications. The second that I'd like to ask the county to do to work with us on is creating or finding a suitable zoning alternative that gives us, an applicant more flexibility with accessory buildings, because I think that's what Paul and some other people are trying to create. And so I hope that opens up the discussion down the road, and that we can have those conversations when these types of things come up. That's all. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on line?
Hello?
Would you like to speak to this docket number?
Yes, I would.
Could you state your name and address? You have three minutes.
My name is John Seaberg, and the address is 803 West Upton. I'm a neighbor of Mickey Shields. She just spoke a few people, a few speakers ago. I'm not there right now, but I have what was probably the original house in the neighborhood built in 1968 by a Tucson builder. This is a real pristine area. My folks moved there, bought their, bought the house in 1987, and we've been there ever. The family's been with this house ever since. I really can't, I've done this all about two or three weeks ago, and I don't understand why an SR 43 or an SR 174 can't be suitable for what we're dealing with here. This is very pristine area. You're right up against the Coronado National Forest. And just as the previous speaker spoke, just to even open up the can of worms that could allow trailers in that area, I don't think would be appropriate. And I would also like to say is that I would think that the county would want single-family residents there, and the thought of anything other than that would be out for one simple reason. The real estate value and the taxing value is by far greater on a single-family permanent resident than it would be on a trailer. So you're actually kind of shooting yourself in the foot. If people see trailers on that area, are they going to come out there and build in the future? I know I wouldn't. And so I would tend to believe that you want to know that that area will be exclusive to single-family homes. And if there's, if there's variances that need to be made for outbuildings, well, that's what variances are for. I've worked with this kind of stuff before in the Chicago Land Area where I live here. So I really can't help to believe that there has to be a solution to this and just to maintain the good tax base that I do believe that Cochise County needs quite badly. And so I would tend to believe that try to work with an SR 43 or an SR 174 with possible variances would be the appropriate way to do this. There, if you want trailers or something like that, there's places along 191 for that. But up here, this should be an area that I think the county would be more than wise to keep as single-family units with the possibility of outbuildings, which would be done in variances. I do thank the committee for listening to my thoughts, and you can take it from here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Hearing none. Mr. Prince, this is your time to answer, if you choose.
I would just like to reiterate, I'm not interested in a mobile home. The 174 does not allow me to have a multipurpose building for my livestock, my feed, or my tools. That is why the option of RU 4 is there for me. I think that's about it. And I'm not interested in having a mobile myself at all.
The public hearing is closed. This is the time for commission discussion or questions. Anyone?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Watkins?
I agree with the two callers. I think SR 174 needs to be changed to allow for larger accessory buildings. And I know we can't do that tonight, but that is something that I would like a work session on or whatever. You know, this is our second time hearing this, different properties, but the same problem. There has to be a solution that will work for both. Now, I know the applicant says he's not interested in mobile, but what about future owners? That's the, that's the big question, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Following up on that, Mr. Taylor, I didn't research it myself. Is there a special use option that could be utilized in the 174?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, relative to accessory structure size, as one of the callers alluded to, there is a variance process that would be, variances typically apply to a numerical value, so it would be site coverage, setbacks, height, square feet. That would be an option for someone who rezoned to SR 174 if they wanted a building larger than the principal residence. It would be difficult to prove a hardship, which is a requirement of variance applications, but that is an option in lieu of RU 4 would be an SR 174 and then attempt to obtain a variance for a larger building.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Montgomery?
Okay. Let's see. Question for the staff on, well, that picture in the left-hand middle corner, there's a residence. It is red in color with a gray. Is that one of the residents in opposition to this home?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Montgomery, that residence is one of the opposing party's residents. I believe it's Ms. Blakes.
Just curious, I had another curious question, if the applicant could, could answer it. On page six, I think there are two, page seven is in my, you noticed that, didn't you? And page eight has the yellow outline of the properties, but there's a significant and noticeable section in the middle that is not part, and it's labeled "not part." Right? Okay.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Montgomery, that is on by another party.
Do I understand that that is not part of your property?
Yes.
Yes.
That will be my property probably by next week. I've just purchased it. Had a hard time dealing with the fellow. Phoned him a number of times. At first would tell me that he didn't own any property in Arizona, and while we were at it, why didn't he sell me some swampland as well in Arizona? Took two letters from my lawyer to finally convince him that he owned that property, and I made him an offer, and he's accepted the offer. I've paid him. So if I could ask you guys, could we add it to this by the time we're done? Because it's by next. My lawyer tells me that it'll be recorded by the end of next week.
Okay. And if I may, one more, or two more. Do you, do you have horses?
Yes.
My stock? Okay. And they're somewhere else evidently at the time. They're not here.
Yes, they're here.
Are they?
Yep.
Okay. This is the other one. Okay, I'll stop at that right now, okay? Thank you. Madam Chair?
Mr. Limbach?
Oh, Mr. Taylor, is the applicant required to satisfy the county code violation prior to any action on this? Should it be approved this evening? Oh, thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Limbach, there are provisions within the zoning regulations that require compliance with all applicable county, state, or federal laws. Prior to us issuing an opt-out permit for the property owner's residence, we would require compliance.
Mr. Prince, would you like to address that issue? Are you living in the RV? I mean, what's the noncompliance issue, and how can you, how do you plan to correct it?
Yes, I'm living in the RV at the moment, and my horses are there.
What is your timetable on construction?
Probably construction next year, starting a little bit this, making a pad this year, building next year, getting the permits as soon as we can resolve this.
Thank you. Ms. Fickett?
Mr. Prince, do you live in Arizona full-time, or are you a part-time resident?
I'm a part-time resident. I'm actually a resident of Alberta, Canada as well, in the summer and here in the winter.
So you're here for the winter months?
Yes.
So you go back to Canada for the summer?
That's right.
Okay.
Correct.
Mr. Saunders, anything? Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Minsky?
I did have one more, too.
Mr. Montgomery.
One more. The, the cutout section we already just talked about a minute ago in the middle that you did buy and you will have ownership of that very soon, according, I suppose, obvious question, you would include that in your proposal for today?
Mm-hmm.
Then can I ask you? You are prepared to build a residence out there?
Yes.
Yourself through the owner?
Yes.
Builder opt-out?
I don't think I want to do a complete opt-out. There's one opt-out that you can have the inspections and I would go with that one.
While it's not part of this presentation today, do you mind describing briefly what your intentions are for residence?
As I.
Do you want to build it yourself?
Yes, it'll be six hundred or so square plus square feet, a Mexican roof line, six-inch walls, a regular house.
My point of my question is, are, are you comfortable in being able to do that yourself?
I, yes, sir.
Okay.
I have experience building.
Okay. And did you have a timeframe in mind and you might want to get on that?
Get started? Well, to be honest, it's going to be a little tough to do a lot this year as I have to leave because I only have so many days that I'm allowed here in the winter and I'll have to leave within, in about a month. So if I can get a pad built this year so it can settle through the summer and start building on it in the fall when I get back and get the permits now.
Okay. My only other question then is, you believe that once you get started though, you could carry through and finish the project in a timely fashion?
Timely fashion, yes. Are we talking, are you, are you wanting me to say like I'll have it built in six months or three years?
Statute's about it.
Yeah.
I wouldn't go outside of those.
No.
Yeah.
But I'm asking you, sir, you know, what are you wanting from me? Are you wanting a commitment from me that I'll say I'll have it built totally in two years or a year or six months?
Would have you gone through these type of things my whole, I know that quite often things take longer than you would say.
Yeah, well, I'd say, sir, I have built a few buildings. I have one building on there that I have built and I built that in a matter of two weeks. It has a metal floor throughout to prevent rats from coming in from the bottom. It is totally metal sealed all the way around and a roof with skylight.
To reiterate, repeat, I think it's already been mentioned a few times, during that time, you would want to reside there in what?
In my RV.
Your RV.
Yeah. And I understand I can do that when I have a building permit and an RV permit.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Oh, don't leave it. This is more of a statement as opposed to a question, but you can still respond. But you knowingly purchased several SR forty-three lots. And now you're wanting to impose your desires on the entire long-established neighborhood. And that to me, that's where I agree with the neighbors and I don't find that fair to the neighborhood.
When I, before I picked up any of these properties for taxes, I talked to the county and I asked them if I buy these taxes, pay these taxes off because most of these parcels were foreclosures. Four of them were privately, were up to date and I tried to purchase, worked on purchasing them. If I may take a minute to give you some history. May I?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay. So I went to the county and I wanted, yes, I wanted that block so that I'd have some grazing for the horses, a nice piece of land. Yes, it is a beautiful, I agree with these people, it's a nice area. That's why I liked it. I had friends living here. I came for coffee. I stayed for three and a half days, did some driving around, chose that piece of property. Came to the county, said, if I pick up these taxes, can I put all the titles together to make a nice little farm area? Have grass for my horses and a place to winter. And the county said, yes, definitely. You can get it rezoned to RU four and you can do a stick build and you can opt out of the building program. They told me all this before I paid any taxes into this community. So that's why I'm now trying to change these to RU four is because the county advised me that I could before I spent a dime. So I did a little bit of homework first and that's the county policy. I didn't change the policy. I tried to work within the line. And while we're at it, some of my beautiful neighbors are doing things that maybe shouldn't be doing either, but we have to get along. And everybody should be able to do what they want on their property as they're not stepping on somebody else's toes. And I don't mean by having our mobile homes, but we should be able to live a life alongside of our neighbors without running judgment on them or wanting them to conform to our way of thinking. And I'm not, I haven't bothered anybody out there. I enjoy riding my horses. I do a bit of horse training. I look after the land. I come from land. I've always looked after land. And I don't overgraze my pastures. My neighbors do. They're not looking after land. I'm looking after land. Sorry, I went on.
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prince, for sharing. Anyone, any further questions, staff or the applicant?
Can I ask the staff on such a project for the owner builder to reside in an RV on the property? I know a permit comes with a timing, but which can be extended, but do you know what that is?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Montgomery, applicants who participate in the owner builder program can apply for a concurrent permit to reside in their recreational vehicle until they take occupancy of their residence. Those permits can be renewed every six months provided there is progress in the construction.
The trouble I see with redistricting.
Mr. Montgomery, speak in your microphone.
Sorry, the trouble that is potentially there for rezoning is it would allow mobile homes other than an RV, which is out there right now. Correct?
Uh, Commissioner Montgomery, yes, in fact, RU, the RU districts do authorize manufactured housing, rehabilitated mobile homes as well as site-built homes.
And so I think that is the, as I'm seeing it, the main problem. Because while everybody here is strongly supportive in favor of property rights, individual property rights, to do a great many things with your own property, those rights kind of stop at the property line. But sometimes whatever happens on a property may diminish the value of the other adjacent properties and those people have property rights too. And they obviously, we've had this here several times through the years, they want to protect the value of their own properties. And I can predict, uh, well, there would be, I won't predict, but I would think that those property rights will be protected overall through every level of Cochise County government is all I can say. Did that make sense to anybody?
Part of it.
Part of it. We have, we have property rights and I stick up for that all the time here, but it doesn't spill over to your neighbor's property rights, you know, and theirs doesn't spill over to yours. And when you talk about getting along with it, we really agree with getting along with each other the best we can. Redistricting, rezoning this to allow mobile homes would not be a popular endeavor in your neighborhood, as I see it. I'm through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Thank you, Commission. I think this is the time for Mr. Taylor's summary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends forwarding docket RZ twenty-four, twenty-five dash zero one to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval without special conditions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'd like to call for the motion, please. Come on.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach.
I move to recommend approval of docket RZ twenty-five dash zero one to the Board of Supervisors without special conditions, rezoning tax parcels one seventeen dash zero six dash zero six three, zero six four, six six, six seven, seven four, seven five, seven six, and seven seven, and seven eight from SR forty-three to RU four, the factors of approval constituting the findings of fact.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I would like to offer the Commission a chance to modify. The condition would be manufactured homes and rehabilitated mobile homes are prohibited on any portion of the rezoned ten acres. My question is, how does this run with the property? For perpetuity?
Madam Chair, if the Commission, well, ultimately if the Board of Supervisors approve the rezoning with that condition, the onus would be on the county to enforce that. The, the way that we would enforce that typically would be the denial of a placement permit for a manufactured home or rehabilitated mobile home. And that would remain with the land as a condition.
And that, and that would turn up when you looked at that property?
Yes, Madam Chair.
So if anyone on the Commission would like to make that?
Madam Chair.
Motion to amend?
I'd make that motion as you ready.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Young, Mr. Watkins. So now we have a motion.
Can you please read it one more time?
Yes. We recommend approval of docket RZ twenty-five dash zero one to the Board of Supervisors with a special condition of no manufactured or rehabilitated home on any portion of the ten acres, rezoning tax parcels one one seven oh six, oh six three, oh six four, oh six six, six seven, seven four, seven five, seven six, and seven seven, and seven eight from SR forty-three to RU four, the factors of approval constituting the findings of fact. Do I have a renewed second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question by roll call, Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Mr. Mardsky?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery? Mr. Limbach?
No, I don't trust the enforcement of the, of that motion in perpetuity.
Thank you. And the Chair also votes no. This is a odd encroachment into an SR one seventy-four. Chair votes no. And I thank you. The motion does pass. This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors meeting dealing with this docket. And I thank you all for your patience. Well, we fight till we live to fight to fight another day. Thank you for attending. Docket CPA twenty-five dash zero one and RZ twenty-five dash zero two, I-ten Business Loop. Applicant requests rezoning of RU four to General Business. Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket CPA twenty-five dash zero one and RZ twenty-five dash zero two, concurrent applications for comprehensive plan amendment on thirty-three acres and to rezon property approximately one hundred acres from RU four to GB. This presentation will also include a staff report for application, special use twenty-five dash zero one for a truck stop. The applicant is Sunaka LLC, care of Al Parakash, who was present. The property is located along Interstate ten, Business Loop, west of Bowie and encompasses parcels three zero two, one five, zero zero one D and zero one one, and portions of parcels three zero two dash one five dash zero zero one H and zero one three D. The plan amendment request is to change the land use designation of thirty-three acres on a parcel zero zero one D from rural to developing and from growth area D to growth area C. Uh, the zoning amendment request is to rezone all the parcels from RU four to GB. The existing use of the parcel is a convenience store with fuel sales, recreational vehicle park. There's also a single-family residence on the property. The majority of the property is undeveloped, however. Proposed use is a convenience store with RV park and truck stop as well as retaining the single-family residence. Property is located along Interstate ten, along the Business Loop, near exit three sixty-two, west of Bowie. This graphic demonstrates the proposed plan amendment area. This parcel zero zero one D totals about eighty-three acres. About fifty acres of that is located within the appropriate plan designations. The westernmost thirty-three acres are what the applicant is requesting the plan amendment for to facilitate a rezone of the entire parcel to GB. Without the plan amendment, only a portion of the parcel could be rezoned to GB and remain in compliance with the plan. This is the second graphic on the growth area. The same thing applies. Growth area C is in green. Growth area D would be that westernmost thirty-three acres and the applicant is requesting plan amendments for both the land use and growth areas. So rezoning of the area demonstrating the prevalence of RU four zoning, a portion of one of the parcels is owned general business already and was rezoned general business back in nineteen ninety-six. The applicant has provided a site plan demonstrating, well, it's more of a concept plan, demonstrating the location of the RV park and the convenience store, proposed location for the fuel pumps on parcel fourteen, as well as the traverse path that the trucks would take over to the parcels to the west where the applicant proposes truck parking as well as a repair shop. Um, to try to simplify some of the issues with the parcels themselves, this graphic demonstrates the parcel in red is parcel zero zero one Delta, totals eighty-three acres. Again, the westernmost thirty-three acres are subject to a plan amendment application. The parcel in blue is parcel zero one three D, which totals a little over four acres and is owned by the applicant. Almost two acres of that is already rezoned GB. The parcel zero zero one H is owned by another property owner who has sold Mr. Parakash the north point six acres so Mr. Parakash can travel, can access parcels to the east and west of that parcel. Otherwise, traffic would be routed onto the Business Loop. The last parcel, parcel fourteen, is the location, I think a lot, everybody's probably seen it when driving along. It's the, the Jerky's place. Mountain VRV Park is there as well. Those date to the seventies. The single-family residence, the, the mobile home slash recreational vehicle park and the convenience store actually were all established in the nineteen seventies. This is a notional markup demonstrating kind of a little bit of a clarification on the applicant's site plan showing the proposed location of the fuel pumps on parcel fourteen, truck parking on the westernmost parcels. These are some images of the Business Loop, first viewing, I believe that's viewing to the west and the second one is viewing to the south. So this is a drawn image viewing to the west. The property in the foreground is actually public land. The property highlighted in yellow is the applicant's property and that portion highlighted in blue is the portion subject to the plan amendment. I do apologize, this did not come out nearly as clear as I had hoped. But the applicant's property again are highlighted in yellow, the portions that have the black highlight are not the applicant's property. The property furthest away again is public land and the property in the foreground is owned by another party. And one last image, this would be viewing to the east showing parcel fourteen with recreational vehicle park, convenience store, and single-family residence. The property closest to us would also belong to the applicant with the property in between belonging to another property owner. belonging to another property owner. Just a couple of descriptions of the land use designations of those westernmost 33 acres. Those westernmost 33 acres are designated rural by the comp plan, which are typically characterized by sparsely populated areas with large lot sizes and large expanses of private and public land, as well as agricultural uses. The plan identifies developing is more consistent with non-rural growth, mixed residential business and industrial uses, with a transitional development pattern that requires periodic reevaluation, as we could see in extra uses, as areas are built out with a variety of different uses. The same for the growth area categories, for rural areas, outlying areas, low growth rates, unimproved roads, very low-density residential development on large lots, and also large tracts of private and public lands. The developing category would be slower-growing rural communities, as pretty much what Bowie is, small clusters of residential and non-residential development, variety of lot sizes, unimproved roads, and prevalent agricultural activities. So you'll see that the land use and growth area categories mirror each other pretty well in their descriptions. There are six criteria contained within the comprehensive plan that staff uses to evaluate rezoning requests, or comp plan amendment requests. In this particular case, three of those factors do not apply. Two of the factors apply, and the one factor that does not apply is that staff has not received substantial support for the plan amendment. That is specifically noted, and that is different from the public input provisions within the zoning regulations that pertain to rezones and special uses. It's a little bit different. As far as the factors in favor of the plan amendment, most of parcels 001D, approximately 50 acres of the 83 acres, is already designated developing and growth area C by the comp plan. The other factors basically are those that are identified on the previous slide for the plan factors. Pattern of growth does not reflect the type of growth expected in the current designation. The new designation is harmonious with existing designations. Three of the factors do not apply to this application, and staff did not receive any opposition from nearby property owners. Again, the one factor against the plan amendment itself would be the lack of substantial support from nearby property owners. Section 2.63 of the zoning regulations identifies 15 factors to evaluate rezoning requests. 12 factors apply to this downzone. Factors in favor of the rezon, complies or partially complies with all applicable factors, intense business uses are appropriate along major roadways, there would be limited off-site impacts due to little or no residential development in the area, a rezoned to General Business will legitimize existing non-conforming uses, as the single-family residence is a conforming use, but the recreational vehicle park and the convenience store fuel sales under today's code would require a special use authorization in RU4 or an outright rezon to GB. Again, staff has not received opposition from nearby property owners. For the rezoning factor not in favor would be the concept plan does really not, well, it doesn't include all of tax parcels 001D to 83 acre portion. So there's a lot we don't know in terms of the long-term plans of the property owner for what would be done with the balance of the property outside of those initial 10 to 15 acres closest to his other parcels. The applicant mailed letters to property owners, a list provided by staff. I believe there were 36 on the list, which was 22 unique property owners within 1,500 feet. The 1,500 feet notification is because of the plan amendment. The applicant did mail those in 30 January, and staff executed the public notification process between 14 and 19 February, publishing illegal advertisement mailing notices and posting the property. And this would be a response map, showing the sole respondent was the property owner bound by the applicant's properties, and that would be the property owner that did sell that small portion of the northernmost part of their property to the applicant to allow some cross-access. Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket CPA 25-01 and RZ 25-02. We are available for the Commission's questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the time for the applicant's statement. You have 10 minutes. State your name and address first. Thank you.
I pay my respect to Madam Chair in charge and Commissioners, County Officers of this public hearing meeting today. My name is Om Prakash. I appear here as applicant for the location at Bowie, Arizona. Land and site applied for rezoning as general business and specials use at 1120 West Business Loop in Bowie, and associated designing parcels. We are trying to beautify present property, SC Store, RV Park, with adding our new truck stop, fueling station, with truck repair and tire shop. Will have truck parking as well, and idea come to our mind to create some employment to the deserving people living near this town, Bowie. And by having a new add-on businesses avenue, it will benefit to interstate traveler and local area. We agree to follow all steps as per county compliance, code, regulation, and rezoning of these parcels. And if general business zoning approved, our engineering team will work with the Coches County Planning and Development Department to create design of new add-on business and stay in compliance for this new add-on businesses development in the near future. I really thankful for hosting this public meeting by County Officers, staff, and all Commissioners of this county. Thank you for that, and I really appreciate support of all Commissioners, planners, staff, and all members of Coches County making it happen for us and the local small-town Bowie community. Thank you again. Have a good, have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, man. Thank you.
This is the time to hear from the public. Do we have any comments from other persons? I see no one in the room. Is there anyone online?
Is there anyone online that would like to speak on this docket?
This would be the time for you to respond, Mr. Prakash. I'm assuming you have nothing to add? Are you good? Yes, thank you.
Now, in doing some of your background, I mean...
Thank you. This is the time for Commission discussion. Do I have any questions? Anyone?
No.
Hearing none. Mr. Taylor, your summary.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends forwarding dockets CPA 25-01 and RZ 25-02 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval without special conditions. Would like to note that there will be special conditions associating with the special use authorization.
Call for the motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
I move to approve docket SU 25-01 with conditions of approval recommended by staff. The factors in favor of approval constituting the findings of fact.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
I just think that this is a good project and a good place. Probably very useful there, and it might even be a safety issue in favor of safety. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Let's take a vote on the comprehensive plan amendment. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Mardzki?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is unanimously approved. But I have, please, one more motion? For the rezoning?
Could you repeat yourself?
We need a motion, and I believe we're going to go with the first one, because we've approved the comp plan.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Watkins?
I move to recommend approval of docket RZ 25-02 to the Board of Supervisors without special conditions, rezoning tax parcel 3021501B, 15-11 .6 acres out of tax parcel 3021501H, and 2.7 acres out of tax parcel 30215013D from RU4 to GB. Factors in favor of approval constituting finding the findings of fact.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Is there any discussion of this motion? Then let us vote. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Mardzki?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is again unanimous. These two docket items have passed. Anyone disagreeing with this action should speak with the Board of Supervisors at the meeting dealing with this docket. We move on to the special use.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is a concurrent special use application, and this is the staff presentation for docket SU 25-01, a special use authorization request to allow a truck stop. The information on this slide is basically the same. Obviously, the zoning, the actions on the part of the board would be pending, as, well, the actions on the part of the Commission as well, relative to the special use, would be pending board approval. Again, the property is located along I-10 Business Loop, near exit 362 west of Bowie. Property is bound by state right-of-way to the south and west, Union Pacific Railroad right-of-way to the north, private properties to the west and the east, while surrounding properties or abutting properties are zoned RU4, with the exception of the portion of the applicant's parcel, applicant's property zone GB in 1996. The nearest residence belongs to the applicant and is located on tax parcel 14. The nearest residential zoning of any concentration of note is located approximately one-half mile to the east. Similar graphic as before, showing the outline of the property, the 83-acre property. And a simplified version, no less convoluted than the previous version, but we know which parcels I think we're talking about at this point. And again, showing the parcel with the existing uses, the single-family residence, manufactured home park, as well as the convenience store. The applicant, again, has provided a site plan. Parcel 14 currently has the recreational vehicle park, convenience store, and single-family residence. The applicant wants to add diesel pumps to parcel 14, the same parcel as recreational vehicle park, truck parking and a repair facility on parcel 13D, and semi-truck parking on parcel 001D, or a portion of 001D. The applicant has provided a couple of notional elevations of the proposed repair shop and fuel canopy. And again, a little clarification on the concept plan, showing the locations of the proposed fuel pumps, truck parking areas, as well as the repair shop. Section 2.48 of the zoning regulations identifies 10 factors to evaluate special use requests. Seven factors apply to this application. Factors in favor of the special use include complies with applicable factors, intense businesses are appropriate along major roadways, including freeways. Staff has not received any opposition from nearby property owners. Factors not in favor would be the concept plan does not include the entire project site. Approximately 25 acres of the site are located within a flood plain, potentially constraining future development. Again, the applicant sent out notices to property owners within 1,500 feet on 30 January, and staff followed up by publishing illegal advertisement mailing notices and posting the property between 14 and 19 February. The response map demonstrates response of one property owner, who would be most impacted by the project. And Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket SU 25-01, a special use authorization request for a truck stop. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Prakash, do you have anything to add?
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you. Hold on. I think at this point, we'll call the public hearing open and closed. This is time for Commission discussion. Is there any questions of the applicant or staff? Excuse me. Hearing none. Mr. Taylor, your recommendation and summary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends approval of docket SU 25-01 to allow a truck stop with the following conditions. The use of tax parcel 3021501D beyond what is described on the applicant's concept plan requires a revised concept plan showing proposed development for the remainder of that parcel and an approved special use modification. Number two, clearing and flood plain use permits are required. Number three, onsite parking areas shall be improved with 2-inch gravel, and driveways shall be chip sealed to reduce dust. Truck parking shall be limited to 30 spaces on tax parcel 3021513D and 40 spaces on tax parcel 3021501D. Site obscuring fencing and landscaping shall be used to screen outdoor storage areas and refuse containers. The remainder of the conditions are the standard conditions. We've amended one condition, increasing the time to apply for that first permit from 12 months to 24 months, given the scope of the project. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'm...
Mr. Mardzki?
I move to approve docket SU 25-01, the decision recommended by the staff. Factors in favor of full constitutional findings of fact.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? And now call for vote. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Mardzki?
Aye.
And Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. This, excuse me, this motion passes. Any individuals disagreeing with the action have the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within 15 days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at the office or online. Congratulations, and good luck to you, sir. This is the time for the Planning Director's Report.
Good evening. The impound storage yard and rezoning that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended in February was approved, and the rezoning was adopted on February 28th at the same meeting. An appeal from Michael Clements on the Cherokee Trail Lodging was appealed. That was approved by this commission, but the board did overturn it. There will be a Board of Adjustment meeting on March 25th. There will be two setback variances. Also, on the 25th, the Board of Supervisors will consider tonight's rezoning and the comp plan amendment that we just heard. Next month, we have two items. One is a downzoning in some sites. It's actually the third time the applicant has appeared before this commission for a rezoning. And there's also a marijuana establishment very near to the last docket that we just heard. That's for a retail marijuana establishment. Also, we'll have...
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Ms. Fickett's been talking about that. Is that not a part parcel?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yep.
Great foot traffic.
Yeah, so the pictures will look very similar to what we saw in tonight's meeting. And there will also be a comp plan update as a work session. And that's all I got for the next month or two.
So I'd like to say that I'm disappointed that they accepted that appeal. It's hard to know how to go forward when those things are going to happen, but that one was exceptionally difficult. Now, what I don't understand is Mr. Thede coming back? How does, can he just repeatedly apply over and over?
He can. He can.
Okay. There are no rules about that?
I have a question on the first docket. You know, we put that condition on it. Is there any... Is there any way we could have asked the applicant to put a deed restriction on that property, which would take the onus off the count?
I mean, we could ask, but I don't know how we'd enforce it. Yeah.
I kind of like others here. I'd like to see, because I think we're going to have more things come about from that, the land over in that area. It was developed years ago with, what, in the seventies, I believe? Those, it was subdivided like a lot of other places in Coches County. And a lot of them didn't ever even come off the ground. Sun sites Pierce did, or more of the Sun sites area. And it hasn't ever materialized into what it was supposed to do. They don't even have a golf course open anymore. It has totally closed down and I understand it's kind of a blight area now.
Part of it's a bit.
Yeah. Is it part of a vineyard? I didn't know that part. But I think we're going to see more and more people see this from other areas, out of state, out of the country, see this area. And, and there are a lot of lots in that area that come up, you know, for taxes in there. And I see, I feel that we're going to see this repeat itself again. But I go with the fact that the people that bought land there a long time ago really should have, and they thought, you know, we're buying this, we're going to build us a nice house and we're not going to look at mobile homes that's going to come in. That something with the SR one-seventy-three would say that maybe you could build another facility there that's larger or whatever, but no mobile homes in that specific area or whatever you'd call them. And it might help along the road to, with neighbors and people moving into that area. I really do feel we're going to see more of it. People like it down here. We've suddenly are being looked at again. I mean, we've got people moving to San Simone. Can you believe it? From Ohio, you know? Oh, the world did they ever fly, does? Yeah, but you didn't move to San Simone.
Yes.
You know, I always call us the redheaded stepchildren of the world, but.
Because of your red dust.
You're right. Well, it's just white dust. It just blows. But I, I feel that we're being looked at again because we have cheaper land.
So I believe she's begging the question, I think, Christine, that I asked you, how are the, how are the special uses assigned to each zoning district? Where are they drawn from? What's the source of those special use designations? And maybe one could be added to at least the four acre, the one-seventy-four. That might help towards solving this problem.
Because you think about it, somebody building, his house is going to be small, but you know, somebody comes in there and builds a two-thousand-square-foot house, but they want to build a ten-thousand-square-foot horse park. That is very, I, I see that happening. People want that. So I think we need to look at that for SR one-seventy-four. What can we do to allow bigger accessory buildings? You know, I have a different take, different concern. Some more concerned with the pressure that we're putting on our very fragile and limited natural resources. If you have an area that increases in density, that's more water, that's more electricity and all those things that we are short of. You know, there's an energy shortage, there's a water shortage and all that. So if we're going to do the right thing for Coches County, we should keep the integrity and the heritage of the county. There's going to be people trying to move in from where, but if you have a four-acre parcel and you build your house and you take care of your house and then next to you, the utility companies are really busy, the plumbers, the, the stress, the flooding, the rerouting of waters and all that stuff, the impact on wildlife. It modifies all of it. Everything's like a spider web. You pull one strand and you rattle all of them. I think we should be a little more prudent or think more about our limited resources and the wise use of that. There's a lot of people who want to move in here until they find out what it takes to drill wells, what it takes to fence your property and all of those things. There's other people that are willing to do that and there would be good stewards of that. I'm all for keeping a healthy environment and keeping the health of our wildlife and our soils and our native vegetation. They're coming here because it's beautiful. If we allow all these mobile homes and tiny little lots, there's people camped out there in the desert right now.
Yes.
They're trashing it. They don't have water, they don't have sewage, they don't have nothing. And what do you do with those people? And if you allow people to come in a couple of steps higher where they got the little eight-by-thirty Volvo, where they got a camper and they're putting rods on the land, they're disrupting your cattle and, and modifying the migratory routes for birds and other wildlife. I think those things are important and we should have a better position, a better stance and try to look in the future and see how we can protect Coches County from deteriorating. This last project was all right because it's a piece of ground and it's proper use for it. Develop it between the railroad and the freeway and there's land that can be developed for that. But when we're developing traditional cattle country or farmland and things like that, I think we should be a little more careful. Like you said, years ago, we didn't have those controls, so they subdivided the whole countryside. And now it's all, nothing ever happened except that it's locked and it all becomes a tax sale because people that own it don't even know they own. Yeah, and I get calls from Coches College sending me out there to look at a piece of ground that somebody's trying to give them for taxes because they don't want to pay taxes. And there's a lot of that.
We get that, too.
So I think we should, we should think about those things as we see the narrative on the dockets and all that. What will this evolve into? And what is our responsibility? It's not just keeping neighbors from hating each other or liking each other. That's always going to happen. I don't care if your neighbor is ten feet away or three miles away. That's human nature. But I think we should do something to take care of our environment. We do do a little bit more, I think, so.
Well, being someone whose family has lived in Coches family, Coches County for over a hundred years, I agree with you about that. But we do have these areas that have already been sectioned that people are coming in and buying. And that's where we like with this with Sun sites, where you need to look at what people bought property that moved in there for and try to protect their rights also.
And a lot.
It's already been done. There's nothing we can do about that.
But maybe what I'm saying is that we should be more strategic on our approach to how to handle these things. There's some areas that should not be developed at all. And there's nothing that says that anywhere. And there's, there's areas that are, that lend themselves well to multiple dwellings and houses and businesses. But once you get away from that, we're going to lose the character of Coches County. And a hundred years ago, people came here in eighteen sixty-five because it was beautiful. And now proposals for, if you go to Douglas, all you see on the north side of radius jump yards and low value, ugly development, you know? And it used to be beautiful. And we need to do a little more work on flood plains, economic impacts, short-term, long-term, that kind of thing. Instead of saying, well, this guy is moving in, he has no dogs, so we will have a problem with dogs barking, so let's approve it. You know, that can, I, it just bothers me when I see these things and our criteria is, okay, they meet all of these things. That's cool. But I think we should, in solar fields and these development areas should be identified ahead of time so that they have a different criteria than pristine native Coches County landscapes and environments.
Thank you. Mr. Limbach?
Also, one thing that I consider is the visual impact of these larger buildings, especially in residential designated regions such as what we heard in the first application. So there are adjacent, people bought adjacent to a national forest and now someone's going to be impacted by this, whatever size he's going to build, you know, block.
Yeah.
And it may not just impact one person, it may impact several. But that's something I think we should be considering as well. I mean, to what end? Can, can you just build, you know, the earth design?
Yeah.
As far as science goes.
I think that's why we have zoning.
There's no land, you know? When you build right next to the national forest, there's no controls. You could set up a concert hall there and screw up the whole vibe of the forest and it'll be too late for us to react then. We should think about what we have and it's very priceless. It's very valuable. It's worth keeping.
I don't think that could happen. I, I don't think we have any zoning that that could happen, do we? Unless you've got like a business zoning or an industrial right next to the forest. I don't think that can happen.
Well, let's make sure it doesn't.
Yeah.
Make it doesn't exist.
You can have a concert hall in nothing.
It's not in the forest, for sure.
It's better to get them out of a smaller portion than the larger portion.
Yeah, I was thinking about that.
It's less stress on the resources.
Yeah. Right. I think it was like eight, eight lots and they can have two, yeah.
I'm sure I don't, it's kind of a good screen.
I was thinking about that.
You can flip the.
I've got to go. I'm just going to say.
Okay.
All for downzoning when we can. We save a whole bunch of, one acre loss combined into four year.
Yeah. One more.
Well, with the, with the truck stop in Bowie, a good thing I can tell you is because I'm on, as some of the rest of you are, on the fire district board that went from going to general business, I believe that they will get more taxes for that in their.
On that note.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.